All right, Barry, we're good to go.
Okay. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of 2022 meeting dates was published in the Eastern Express Times and the Hundredan Democrat on February 17, 2022, and posted on the Golden Board at Borough Hall. Action may now be taken.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please receive Mr. Volco, if you might? I always have these unfortunate moments, but I do want to ask for a moment of silence. We lost several of some pretty famous people around Hybridge since our last meeting. First was Betty Ann Dean. She was a second-grade teacher for 30 years, actually awarded the Teacher of the Year in Sukesbury. She was the beloved sister, she was a mother, and most importantly, but she was also the wife to Steve Dean, which many of us know has been the chair of the Hybridge Planning Board for many years. We also lost Mr. Michael Seadrow, Riverside Wines, who is a founder of Riverside Wines, turned an old bank into Riverside Wines about 36 years ago. He started the very first Hybridge Farmers Market and was actually one of the founding members of the HDBA as well. I attended his service and many people spoke to his infamous Thursday night wine pairings, and myself could speak to overwhelmingly excellent knowledge of wines, so people can use. And then just last week, Mr. Joseph Ahern, for those who don't know, he served on the Hybridge Economic Development Committee for nine years, lived in Hybridge for many years. I didn't know any of this until I read his obituary, which made me kind of sad that, yeah, sometimes you should take the time to talk to people, and that's on me, but he was born in England, and he and his parents, his two parents fled to the United States, to Queens during World War II. He was a U.S. Marine and Corporal in the Vietnam War, had his MBA in economics, and he was a financial operations specialist for the FBI. So, kind of cool. I think a lot of us knew each of these people, so I'm sad to see them go. And please let's have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Barry?
Yes.
Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Silvestri?
Here.
Strain?
Here.
And Lee?
Here.
Motion to dispense with the reading of the July 21 regular minutes.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Strain?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
Motion to approve the July 21, 2022, regular minutes.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Strain?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
Let me say this. It is policy of the Borough Council that all public comments on an issue shall be limited to three minutes per person. Comments may be made on any subject pertaining to Borough issues. Comments pertaining to public hearings should be saved for that section of the agenda. Each person may speak once during the public comment section. No debating between residents. Comments should be addressed to Mayor and Council at the public microphone. Before we ask anyone from the public to come up, I know there's been a lot of discussion around the taxes and the assessment process, and since our tax assessor could not be here tonight, I'd ask Bonnie, if she could say a few words about the process, so maybe it might answer some questions before anyone comes up.
Sure. So, the assessor is actually a state-certified position. The assessor is appointed by the governing body, but the assessor reports to the county board of taxation. Evaluations are determined based on established principles and state statutes. No one in this room plays any role in the determination of the final evaluation. In January, the tax duplicate is prepared by the county using evaluations that the assessor gives them. In February, you all get a postcard in the mail that tells you what that assessment is going to be for the year, and that assessment is then what your taxes are based on. When you get that postcard, that's the time that you should consider filing an appeal if you disagree with that assessment. In Hybridge, we are currently in the second year of a five-year reassessment program. The goal of the reassessment program is to bring everyone up to market value over the five-year period. Historically, this has cut down on the number of appeals to next to none compared to 10 or more in years that we did not do the reassessment program. Now, significance of that is that limiting the number of appeals, the Borough actually loses that amount that is paid back in taxes, not only the municipal portion, but the portion that would go to the county and the schools. So, we have to refund whatever is decided on the appeal, but we still have to pay the schools the full amount and the county the full amount. So, limiting those appeals is helpful to the Borough. The reassessment program is actually approved by the county. The assessor files regular reports with the Tax Board Administrator on the progress she's making on the reassessment. And when you're buying a home in Hybridge, it's always best to calculate the taxes on the purchase price. So, currently, we're in a real seller's market, and it's difficult to keep up with the assessments. The assessor is trying. Houses aren't selling for the list price. There are bidding wars going on. They're resulting in higher prices. So, the other thing is if you do major improvements on your property, there will be a reassessment or an added assessment placed on your property based on the value of that improvement. And you also have the ability to appeal that. The added assessment clauses go out in October. You'll do November with your fourth quarter payment, and you have until December 1st to appeal that. So, let's just break down of the assessment process. There is a handy guide that's on our website under the tax page that goes through the whole process from taxation to assessment to billing. So, if you have any further questions on other aspects of that, we can check that out.
Where is on the website? I've heard the tax page.
There are forms and...
On the very bottom of the page.
Okay, so with that, let's have some public talk.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Correa. I live at 35 Church Street. I'm here today with my wife, Jennifer Katarski, and we moved in last summer. We are here to say that we believe that the annual property assessments are not being done accurately or fairly. After the purchase of our home last summer, our assessed value increased by... Other than ownership, there were no other changes to warrant such an increase. Because of this increase, our property taxes went from $11,923 to $15,054 for 0.16 acres and 2,030 square feet. That's a $3,130 increase, or 26% of reasonable tax increases of only $300 to $500, and overall are paying $3,000 to $5,000 less than us for roughly the same amount of property, square footage, and updates. In many cases, larger homes with double or more property are paying thousands less. It also seems that these drastic assessments increases and $2,000 to $5,000 tax increases are only being handed down to new homeowners who purchased within the last year or so. According to the New Jersey Division of Taxation, this is known as spot assessing, and it is illegal. We reached out to the Borough Tax Assessor, Anna Maria Obaginski, to ask why these discrepancies exist, and she was unable to answer our question. She claims that an annual reassessment is done equally across the board, but the records do not show this. The records show that only recently sold homes are being assessed, and all other homes are going untouched, thus creating a massive disparity in tax burden. After bringing all of this to her attention, she said something to the effect of, "We've been meaning to take a closer look at Church Street. This is not confidence-inspiring. If the annual assessments were being done correctly and fairly, there would be no need to take a closer look at Church Street." She acknowledged that home sales in Hybridge have been very strong, but was silent when I suggested that her office needs to make adjustments to the assessment formulas to account for the stronger sales. When we asked if there is a review process of the assessments or whether someone is auditing her work, she was also silent. Later that evening, she sent us an email asking if she can inspect our home in September. This is very concerning, and we are asking you, the council, to please look into it. New homeowners should not be singled out to receive unfair assessment increases and bear the bulk of the tax burden. If the Borough intends to have an annual reassessment, then it must actually be done in earnest for all homes, and it must be done fairly. The assessor is supposed to correct inequities, not create them. And one other thing is that if the annual assessments were actually done for everybody, perhaps we would not need a 4.255% tax rate. Perhaps it could be lower. We're just asking that the Borough Assessor and the assessments be reviewed for accuracy and fairness for all residents. Thank you.
I mean, there's one thing that's worth noting is that prior to, I think it's now six or seven years ago, all houses are supposed to be reassessed every five years. And so, if you tried to do everybody in one year, it was taking more than a year to do it just because there's so many houses to be done at the time, you didn't allow for it with one person or two people doing. Also, the changes were very drastic all of a sudden after five years of waiting. You can't do every house every year. We just can't do it. Simply not possible. Milltown does it. There's just not enough manpower. So, we do 20% of the houses every year for five years so that every five years, everybody gets reassessed. So, not every house gets reassessed each year, for sure. Now, I can't address the idea that individuals who have just bought a house are always... I'm not aware of that. If that's not allowed, or I mean, certainly that'd be worth looking into, but the idea that everyone gets done every year, it just can't be done, and that's why we do 20% every year for five years so that over every five years, every house eventually gets reassessed. I mean, I know that's why that happens.
That's just not what the assessor said.
Okay.
Misleading is an annual assessment.
Okay, it is an annual assessment program that does a 20% each year. I guess this is a way to say... You're right.
Reassess annually, but not everybody.
Yeah, that's easy to misunderstand, absolutely.
If we did the whole town annually, it would be a revaluation as opposed to a reassessment for the five years. And when there is a property that's a new purchase, there is a letter that goes out, a property data sheet from the assessor that shows what the assessment is based on, at which time you can have an inspection done of your property, which would allow her to see what exactly is in it if she's not reporting it correctly.
Hello, thank you. I'm Sue Jo McGalsky, and my family purchased our home in Hybridge in April 21 during the pandemic. At the time, we paid the list price for the home at $450,000 with no bidding war. We were the only offer. We love our 1915 crasped home and neighborhood. We have done very little to the home in the way of improvements, limited to only replacing an air conditioning unit that was broken and updated some electrical to remove dangerous mob and tube wiring in just part of the house. Yet, our taxes jumped 51% to $17,200 a year. The improvement assessment increased $130,000 from '21 to '22, which makes no sense and is not justified. We are paying over $17,000 for 0.22 acres per home that has bathrooms and kitchens that have not been renovated in 25 years. When I asked the assessor about the increase, she confirmed that she used the real estate listing to assess the home, not the data, but the realtor-written verbiage about many upgrades. No one ever came inside our home. The listing bragged of many upgrades, as any savvy real estate broker will state. However, we have confirmed that the kitchen was renovated in '95, 27 years ago, by the prior owners. The bathrooms were renovated shortly after that. We have experienced a tax increase that has not been explained nor justified, especially compared to those who have lived here longer, including those who have recently completed massive renovations to their third-floor attic spaces, brand-new kitchens and bathrooms, and more. I urge that you examine how these assessments are being done, and please justify these to your tax-paying residents. Perlet to New Jersey Division of Taxation's Property Administration document that Nick mentioned before, an assessor is not allowed to reassess property based only on its recent sale. That is spot assessing, and it is illegal. This practice of reassessing properties solely because properties have been sold in the previous year is unconstitutional because it shifts the tax burden to new owners in the municipality. Thank you for your time in evaluating this.
My name is Jennifer Katarski, and I live with my husband, Nicholas Correa, at 35 Church Street. We moved here last year with full knowledge that the tax rate in Hybridge were higher than most other towns. We fell in love with the home and the town as a whole, and while we were not happy with their higher taxes, we accepted it and made our purchase. This year, due solely to the recent purchase, without any improvements or changes to our home other than the name on the deed, our home increased in value by $68,000, increasing our property taxes by more than $3,000. Our neighbors, their assessed values increased by only a few hundred, except for the ones who bought in 2021. Everyone who bought in 2021 saw the same increase this season. When we reached out to the tax assessor, Anna Maria Obaginski, and asked about the process, she confirmed that they will reassess every year per current market value. It only takes a glimpse of the numbers to see that this is not being done. When we asked her why we saw such a large increase, she said home sales have been very strong in Hybridge. When she asked about how our homes could be worth tens of thousands more than our neighbors, who have comparable and many times larger properties, if we are all being assessed in the same market, she said, "Your home must have been renovated." Permanent records show that our home has not been renovated since 2003. She said, "We can appeal on behalf of our neighbors if we think they are too low." I asked, "How can I appeal every home purchased before 2021?" And she was silent. It is not acceptable to be told by the individual assigning value to our home that the market in our town is strong enough to increase our assessment by $68,000, yet the same assessor then only adds hundreds to our neighbors, many of whose houses are assessed nearly $100,000 less than ours. This system is broken, and it is placing the bulk of the burden of tax increases on new homeowners. It is not acceptable to be assured by multiple individuals that each home in Hybridge is reassessed each year to match the current market when the numbers prove this is blatantly false. We have the option to appeal our assessment. Ultimately, the value is not the issue. The issue is that we and we alone, as new homeowners, are being assessed in this current strong market while every other house sits idling at current values until it sells, at which point their taxes will skyrocket. Bringing everyone up to current value at which they are supposed to be assessed means that these increases would be distributed more evenly, and we would not have this discrepancy where new owners carry such an unfair load. People will see more reasonable increases across the board, and perhaps it would even result in a lower tax rate overall. Ignoring these issues will hurt the town and will hurt anyone who is looking to buy or sell in this town. You have to look at the numbers to see that this is wrong. The successor needs to be reviewed, and changes need to be made.
Good evening. Gordon Marks, resigning at Eleven Hill Press Lane for many years here. Tonight, I'm meeting with you on behalf of the Gulf Committee. I'd like to remind the Borough with the upcoming RFP that the committee did recommend the R B upgraded to a venue that could be leased out and therefore recoup some of the costs. However, if the council so deems that to not go that route and go into the structural repairs, you must take in mind that the barn also needs exterior upgrades for painting. I mean, the barn has been painted a long time. It's looking pretty shabby. It's been replaced. It needs additional repairs. On another note, the Director of Agronomy for our management company stated very clearly in our recent meeting that the Borough continues to neglect funding the course adequately, and that's starting to show. All the bunkers have failed, and to that point, we have engaged an architect whose report will be due next month. Also, the grounds are starting to show it. If you've been out to the course, you'll see these large patches of dormant or dead grass. This is because of the neglect... I won't say neglect. The desire by the council to not fund enough monies to the golf course. Again, this is the only and a great value in Hybridge that returns money to the Borough. All the other public properties don't return a value in money, but they return certainly all recognized many other values to the members of the community. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Just a minute, Anna. Sally Ward from Salitude. I'm glad he just mentioned the golf course because I saw on the agenda that we had a request for a proposal come out in Resolution 186, and I am very grateful to have seen that because of what he said. It's a good opportunity to bring income in, which will help bring down taxes for everybody, hopefully, and someday, you know, sooner than later. And a venue like that, I was thinking about it, doesn't just have to be weddings and stuff. I mean, heck, you could show movies in there on weekends. You could have concerts in there. You could do all kinds of stuff if it were fixed up. And I'm just really quite excited about the possibilities of it. So, I'm hoping that the three men who were here who voted down the last time would reconsider now that they had enough time to think about it and see the results of not having it. And I'm just saying, thanks for putting it back up on the agenda, and let's rethink it and do it from a positive perspective. And, you know, think positive. Have courage.
Karen Hill, 15 Mills Street. I'm not going to talk about taxes. Want to talk about volunteers? I've been volunteering for anything and everything in this town for a long time, and processes have been put in place and making... It's supposed to make things easier for us to have events, and it's becoming more difficult, like having to pay for the fire marshal for a Borough event. And now, we're supposed to be having a movie on September 2nd, and when our chair put in for the funds to be let out to pay for the movie, they were told to go through Ms. Barry, who's no longer the chair of the events committee. So, if we could look at the procedures that are in place and make sure that I could just go put on my little shirt and show I have a Hybridge event as volunteer.
Leah Upstadia, 38th and Main Street. I'm just listening to the discussion about the taxes, which I think everybody worries about, their taxes. We all do know that we live in a town with high taxes, and Bonnie explained very nicely about how tax assessor works. It sounds to me like people are very concerned about the tax assessor herself. I'm just curious if you guys could sort of educate us as to who is responsible for that person, if that makes sense, like what's the oversight there, and who does she actually work for? And I think that would maybe be useful to everyone. So, thanks, guys.
It's the county that is responsible for her actions. The county does review her work. She submits reports to them on a regular basis of what she's doing, and they approve it. So, whatever she's doing has been accepted by the county board of taxation.
So, I'm still not hearing of it. So, I'm just going to say, so, because my understanding is no one in this room has any control over that. You guys set the rate. So, what's the process for speaking to the county about if you have an issue?
You've got to file an appeal.
The first thing is you have to file your appeal. If you haven't done that, you really are, you haven't done your job. I mean, you have to do that first.
You've got to file an appeal.
I mean, it's the start. And then, if she doesn't do it right, then you go to the county and say, "I filed an appeal," and she didn't do what she's supposed to do. And that's the next obvious, because then you'd have the data to say, "It's still not done right."
Got it. And I don't know everyone's specific situation in this room, but it does make sense to go to the county and file that appeal. And, you know, it is frustrating. So, I feel for everybody through what they're going through, but that is the process, unfortunately. And then, we can all band together as a Hybridge community and demand some changes because we're all in the same boat, and I think we can all agree on that. From our higher official level, the state level.
Hi, Lauren Hamlin, 26 Highland Avenue. I'm a local Realtor as well, so just wanted to give a bit of a different perspective on the taxes. Obviously, everyone moves to Hybridge and is aware that our tax rate is the highest in Hundredan County. We make up for it with our wonderful community and events and all of that, but it only goes so far. And I think the biggest part of the problem is for the last two and a half years, we've seen unprecedented market value growth, and so, these most recent homeowners, the last two and a half years, have been really impacted by these tax increases. And, you know, I have had an experience in talking with the tax assessor in the past, and I can honestly say, it is very frustrating. You do not get the answers you're looking for, and to me, that's unacceptable. Part of her job, when you do Google what her job is, is to speak clearly in a way that anyone can understand, and instead, it's defensive, it's rude, frankly. A quick Google search again will show her past experience has left some townships in a little bit of a hard situation, and I think that we really need to look at ourselves as a town and have council come forward. These appeals are not going to be enough. We need to look at, this is our town, and we want people to keep moving here. There's going to need to be something done in order to keep people wanting to come here, because $17,000 a year in taxes for the house that was described is ridiculous. Not for nothing as well, when I purchased a home in 2019 and I was sent the tax card, it was assessed with an additional bedroom and bathroom that never existed, never could have existed. Of course, she did correct it for the following year, however, that was after the supposed town-wide reassessment that we had, which was, in my opinion, never done. I've lived here for 11 years. No one's ever had a note on my door. No one's ever come in, nothing. So, I think we really need to investigate further in terms of what is actually being accomplished and look back in time as well, because five years from now, if the people who were reassessed a long ago are finally reassessed, that's quite a long period of time. People are paying a lot more in taxes than others. And I also did a quick search from 2006 homebuyers. They are not paying near what we are paying most recent homebuyers in Hybridge comparatively. So, anyway, not as prepared, but I just wanted to give my answer to each question.
Wanting the public hearings, ordinance 2022-034, setting construction fees, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Strain?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm sorry.
For the most part, this is just a, setting up a separate section for mechanical and elevator subcodes, which were not in here before, so some of the things that were in plumbing are now be categorized as mechanical wear or mechanical. So that's the biggest change that's been made.
Right. Any questions for the public? Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2022-034.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Farrelly.
Yes.
Motion to adopt, excuse me, ordinance 2022-034.
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
Farrelly.
Yes.
Written communications.
We have two legislative tasks. Notice is a public hearings, we have a monthly zoning report, July, and a tax finance monthly report.
On to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to take anything out of the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull, I'd like to pull on Resolution 177 just for some discussion purposes.
186, is that the other?
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, so can I get a motion to approve consent agenda, Resolution 174 through 176, and 178 through 185, and 187?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilman Sylvester, why don't you start first?
Yeah, so I'm looking at this to open up another request for proposal on the golf course, and after what happened last year, I think as a council or as a committee, you need to actually have a real plan on how to move forward. Like the gentleman you said, the course is in some neglect right now, it needs to be upgraded. Sewer pumps, sand traps, so I see a need to reinvest in this. I believe it's a golf course first, and we need to take care of those state customers that come in. To redevelop the barn, which is not a horrible idea in itself, is fine, but we're staring at donated 20-year-old trailers for a clubhouse, and that's where our everyday paying customers are coming to. The bathrooms are inadequate, the square car isn't adequate. That building needs to be replaced, needs to be replaced, those trailers need to go. And inadequate clubhouse for our course should be the priority before redevelopment of the barn for weddings and other events.
Well, I do want to clarify the comment from Mr. Marks, that we're not looking to redevelop the barn for any event. Remember, we did actually have somebody that approached us with a whole plan to improve the golf course and the clubhouse and barn and the landscaping, and a lot of different ideas, and council and members of the public didn't agree that that approach was acceptable. So we're trying a new approach of just wanting to go out for RFP broadly, because we want to take it in piecemeal, because that's really our only choice right now. And the priority really is to find a place to house the golf carts that we spent a significant amount of money on two years ago, I think it was, that are now sitting out with snow, rain, sleet, hail, 24/7. So this RFP, we don't even know what it's going to be yet. This is, let's say, we're going to start working RFP at the Golf Committee meeting we had last week, we spoke to our attorney again. We really think the facility that we were talking about for the carts is the priority in this case, under the redevelopment.
I don't disagree with some of them, I'm just saying, we have to, if we're going to keep the barn, we need to refurbish the barn structurally, we've got this.
I agree with that.
The worst thing is, we have daily customers that come in, and our clubhouse is nowhere near any other clubhouse standards in our area.
Councilman, I could not agree more. I wish you were here last year to go on that.
Okay. So, like I said, I'm not opposed to doing a barn, I think we need to have a systematic order to get this done.
Yeah.
Now, I always envisioned those trailers gone, and maybe a small ranch-style home with a room this size to host your outings and your daily golf events. And it doesn't have to be extravagant, but it certainly needs to be updated before you spend money.
I wish you were here last year, honestly.
Well, last year, we spoke about.
We had all of it. But just, I don't want to cut you off, but I just want to clarify, this RFP is not committing us to any consent. It's saying, we want to go out now, we heard feedback from the public that they wanted us to go out for proposal from this, as opposed to accepting the proposal that was offered to us. So that's all we're voting on tonight.
This just allows us to create the request for proposal, so we could put all those things into the request, is that correct?
Well, we want to keep it much smaller than that, because
Or not.
We all went through this last year, and we don't want to.
This is just a plan to create it, is all it is. No request. Because that was one of the problems last time, was that people said we didn't go out for an RFP, so now we are going out.
How are we determining the scope of the RFP?
We still have to figure that out.
We have to figure that out.
This allows whoever, the Golf Committee probably, to do that, to create a scope of that.
And then bring it back to us.
I will address this when I do the public. For review and approval?
Right.
Well, perhaps the resolution should say review and approval, not necessarily just review and consent.
We're not approving anything other than we want to go out for RFP.
That we just want to do something.
Review by the borough council. Well, the resolution will best reads specifically, "This RFP shall be prepared for review by council, borough council, not necessarily shall be prepared for review and approval by council."
Well, I mean, that's how it works, so that's.
Council would have to approve it.
Right.
Even though I hear you in terms of what the resolution says review, council would have to approve it before it went out. Approve the RFP and all its scope, yeah. Chris, can you come up with a long-term plan, what the committee sees fit for this project?
Yeah, actually, one of the things that we talked about during the conference that I was exactly this, and the wording was, "Further improve the barn specifically to store and protect the park," and that was a priority that we were talking about. But what people are talking about, I agree as well, throughout the town, we didn't touch on it enough, but it is something that I was going through, and I totally agree with that. There are some first-time golfers, the ones who are the primary, the first, the 20th, the people who have become, I won't say their names, but these are the early people who bought into the membership, they are the ones who I'm talking to, and they're the ones who, first thing out of the box, they talk about is that that trailer was a picture. So I am absolutely open to it. That was a new thing that I'd heard over in the spring and the summer, that they were that frustrated. So unfortunately, this process does take time, and I am absolutely open to it.
It took 20 years to get to where we are today, to have this opportunity, and I think we should, if it took 20 years to have the completion of the next process, I'm fine with that too, as long as it's a process. Absolutely, I'm willing to say, and I will obviously have to get all of that. I want to move forward.
Should we vote on this first?
You start.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 186-2022?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Farrelly.
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Schwartz.
It's Resolution 177 for the authorizing counterclaim and tax appeal. I did want to point out that the resolution does say, let's see, that, whereas the mayor and council of the borough and the advice of the tax assessor for the borough, determine that it is in the best interest of the borough to defend the above appeal and to file a counterclaim at the tax court of New Jersey claiming that the 2022 assessment for the property should be increased to the fair assessable value thereof. So reading through this, it sounds as if we're not only defending the assessment, but we are counterclaiming that the assessment should be higher than the original assessment.
Yeah, it's standard practice, and quite frankly, it's very prudent, because it has happened, it's not common, but it has happened, that when you go through the process, it turns out that the tax assessment is too low. You know, certainly, for some instances tonight, where people believe that taxes are much too high, but they have the situation where somebody filed a tax appeal, and the assessment's too low, and so the borough should have the right, if somebody's raising this claim that, you know, they want the tax assessment reviewed by the court, borough should have the right to raise it. And it's prudent, it's standard practice. Over the years I've been here, certainly, we've always filed counterclaims, just to protect the borough, that that should happen.
And to clarify, for anyone that's not quite on this very late page in our supporting documents, this is for the property at 100 West Main Street, which is the ELAT property directly across from Borough Hall, falling in on itself. Could we work a significant amount of tax revenue for the borough if we could get a developer in there? It's currently being assessed at about $450,000. So I think we have the right to appeal that as residents and tax payer and a governing body.
I just wanted to understand. Yep, this doesn't have any impact on any other issues going on with that property, does it?
Nope.
Okay. The many.
Many.
Okay, motion to approve Resolution 177-2022.
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Graham.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Farrelly.
Yes.
Okay. On to committee of finance. Let's kick it off with Councilman Graham, Golf and Finance.
First thing out of the box was the finance. One of the things that was completed was the annual audit has been included. There are no recommendations from the audit, which is a good thing, and that means everything is in order, basically, financially speaking. Also, one other thing is the annual tax sale has been scheduled for Friday, October 21st, and again, this year, the sale is electronically, virtually, like, not present for a visit. So the next thing will be the Golf Committee. We have a meeting August 15th. I felt like it was very positive and tidy. We had a couple of the issues, one of them was the sewer grinder pump, which is our priority that's moving forward, and the sand trap repairs. We had the architects walk the grounds with us and Gordon and Jeb, and his report will be probably available in September. I'm hoping it'll be available by the next time I have a report, because I'm very interested in what he has to say. July was said to be very good, August is on track to be excellent as well. There are a handful of upcoming events. One of them is the Hybridge Hills Club Championship, which is the 27th and 28th. The Hybridge Fire Department has a golf outing on September 9th, and the Califon Fire Department has an outing on October 7th. There is Hybridge Resident Golf Days, which is Friday, September 23rd, it's very popular. All the residents are welcome to be a part of that.
Excuse me, Hybridge's outing is September 9th?
September, what did I say, September?
October 7th.
The Hybridge Fire Department outing is September 9th, and the Califon is October 7th.
Sorry.
But I did have an explanation within the conference of the request for proposal, as I didn't anticipate, and I was basically saying what I had just said, which is, it's to further improve the barn specifically to store the carts. Clearly, this isn't what the town wants. The constituents who are in this town want an RFP placed out there for proposal, totally reasonable, totally understandable, this is what you want, this is what we want, so certainly that is something that we're moving forward on. And obviously, with the clubhouse, that's an issue that is new, but it's definitely front and center as we speak, so I'm totally completely going to work on that. And I believe that is it for my committee.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farrelly.
Historical, I promised when I already be short, normally we have a long day. So committee members and volunteers have been busy preparing for the second floor reveal of the Solitude House in preparation for the second annual Jazz Brunch this Sunday, the 21st. Brunch will begin at 11:00 a.m., with tours beginning at 11:30, and tickets for the Jazz Brunch will be 25 advance and 30 at the door. Getting them in advance helps us plan for the brunch, so if you could do that, that would be great. And they're on sale on Eventbrite, and please check our Facebook page for details, it's Hybridge History, or email us with any questions at history@hybridge.org. We'd like to thank jazz musician Arturo for donating his time to provide the live jazz music at this event, as well as Hilltop Deli, Carmine's, Circa, and Adele Deli for donating food. Please come out and help support our efforts to continue our restoration efforts at Solitude House, and we look forward to seeing you this Sunday. The committee's newest Solitude t-shirts and our newly designed Alien t-shirts will be available for purchase in our retail store, Trailers Trade, located inside the Solitude, and it will be open during the Jazz Brunch and at the Tisco Open Market on the 27th. Tisco Open Market is coming up the last Saturday of the month, and the market will be a pop-up at the Commons on Main Street this Saturday, August 27th, from 9 to 2. No, I'm sorry, not this Saturday, the following Saturday, correction on that, with vendors set up beginning at 8:00 a.m. Several new vendors will be attending, but there are some spaces still available for additional vendors, and spaces are $25 each, and all proceeds go directly to renovations of the borough's historic properties. And again, if you'd like to sign up for that, it's history@hybridge.org. And also, just a reminder that Solitude House, first and second floors and the exterior grants are available for event rentals, so if you're curious, please do consider stopping by at the brunch this Sunday, or email us at history@hybridge.org. And just one extra comment, I'd like to make in answer to one of the public comments regarding events. I don't know what the misunderstanding was with that, but I don't have anything to do with approving events that would be, that would go through Steve Strange and the events chair and Borough Hall. So anyway, just to clarify.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything about that either, but I definitely want to make sure the show goes on, so anytime I can step in, please just shoot me the notes.
So hope to see y'all at the brunch. Mark decided to show you what's going on there.
Councilman Schwartz.
Yes, education. My report's going to be relatively short. Next regular session of the Hybridge Board of Education will be meeting on August 29th, Monday at 6:30 p.m. at the middle school library. School will be starting, first day of school, Thursday, September 1st, for all Hybridge school students, and at Voorhees, that will be August 25th, also at Voorhees. I believe I speak for all of council in wishing students, teachers, administration staff, and school boards a very successful screening. That's all I can say.
Councilman Sylvester.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Charles Brandon Metz to Hybridge as our new director of agronomy and work. So we're forward to work with Brandon, and I'd like for him to know we're able to assist him in any way possible. Over the summer, Mary, you voted to create the funding, and I interviewed three candidates, all of which had excellent qualities, and as you can see by his resume, he had committed Mr. Metz. We were all in agreement that he fits our needs very well, and we look forward to working with him in the future.
He's behind the back, so get used to his face.
Welcome.
Just a quick update here, with our VPW going past, during the summer here, it's continued with the pothole repairs, rolling operations, several water main lakes, and water needed replacements, so you have a water need replaced each of our borough or VPW, and schedule a work. It doesn't take long, it's about a 15, 20-minute change item. The Natural Recycling Center at the Commons will be open August 27th, September 10th, and September 24th from 9 to 1. Russian tree branches, no larger than three inches in diameter, are accepted, please no lumber, wood, grass, put these or these. Check the borough website for other dates throughout the fall. I'd also like to give you some updates. Hart Street, we were awarded a safe passage to school grant from the federal government four years ago. We're waiting for final design approvals from the DOT, then we can present the final design to the public and work on that project in the spring. We also won a, the same grant for Central Avenue, and that also is a sidewalk upgrade. And the nice thing about this grant, or these grants, are that the state funds paving after the sidewalks are complete. So when that project is complete, Jenny Junk will have a very nice access, safe access to Main Street and then across the schools, so it's a very nice project. New Jersey Transit, we are having conversations with them on the Craig River Road Bridge, as it now is scheduled for next summer. We don't have many details on detours and a construction schedule, but we will release it as available. For those that don't know, the River Road Phase 2 has been completed, and it's very nice, exciting, drive past Lake Solitude, nice and smooth, wonderful, you should go see it. Yeah, it is. The church. Yes, there we go. The church extension water main project is almost complete. This included tariff, Thomas Street, prospect, prospect all around the middle school. We are still trying to get it paved before the school year starts. We cannot, we provide a schedule, and not the residents of the school know how bad it's been, so we won't interfere with the school, of course. Well, upgrades, which we're including pumps, valves, and monitoring equipment, is scheduled for September. We approved this back in the spring, but scheduling and supply chain issues, and now the crap we're going through, we pushed this into September, is not to cut water pressure around Borough. We're also going to have a pre-construction meeting, we start the Bundyville Water Project, I think that's going to start in the winter, depending on the speeding. We also have on the table in October, they work with Suez, Suez Water on our water tank maintenance program, and we spoke about this earlier in the year. It's a really good program where they maintain and inspect our tanks and infer the cost of, like, insurance program, that's what it's about. Fire hydrant flushing, we're just about done with that, and we're going to suspend it for the year because we're kind of getting water main breaks behind the flushing. Fortunately, the areas that are left are the middle school area, which we have all the water mains in, so that won't be a problem. They will continue with bailing the hydrants as part of the program. We also approved earlier this year, the equipment for the DPW, which included pickup trucks, truck bodies that are plowed. We still not have made those purchases, supply chain issues and availability. Keep your posted and we can get those. Like Chris was talking about, the grinder pumps for the valve cores, I think at the next meeting we'll have the bids and we'll be able to try and get that fixed as soon as possible. And one other thing, not too long ago, some residents came up talking about Nassau Road and how bad it was. Unfortunately, I don't have anything solid to tell you about Nassau Road, but we have been having meetings about it, we've spoken to engineers, we're trying to come up with a plan to hopefully resolve that issue in the near future. Be patient, we have been about, we just wanted to. That's all I have to say.
Good news, thank you. Councilman Strange.
Okay, my dogs will appreciate any fixes to the potholes on Nassau Road. And for the historic, you guys were giving out shirts and things at Solitude House, and I just wanted to reiterate that there was at least one person who came by and got a shirt and spent many hours being so happy that he had a cool, new historic Hybridge shirt. So, it seems like a little thing that people appreciated. And as a young person, you may continue to volunteer forever now. Let's see here, so I'll start with police for July, just real quick, 810 calls, thankfully no arrests, 89 traffic stops and four crashes, I think one of those is the Mill Street crash. In terms of overtime, 187 hours of overtime, which is mostly shift coverage and holiday stuff, trying to deal with people taking time off in the summer. There were bloodborne pathogen and hazardous communication trainings for all the officers. One officer received the right to know training, five use of force trainings, and two the reeds technique for patrol officers. For the fire department, from July 1st to July 31st, had 33 incidents, two firematic drills and one fumeral detail. Six volunteers staffed the, what's it called, mutual aid group station on July 8th from 6:00 to 6:00, and the total hours for July were 381.12 man-hours. Two other things to note right now, they're replacing the chief's vehicle, they'll be buying a new Chevy Tahoe to be used by the chief to respond to all incidents of various sorts, I'm not going to list all of them. The nice thing about it is also it has tow capabilities, so that it can tow the two boats, the ATV, in case the utility truck, the brush truck sort of thing is out of service. This is replacing the 2005 Chevy Tahoe that they've been using for 17 years. That's pretty good, I have to say, it's not as old as my Jeep, but it looks better because the fire department does a phenomenal job of taking care of their vehicles and making them last, so it's a good investment. I would imagine the older one will be sold off. And lastly, from fire, I guess they've been getting a lot of calls about smoke smells from campfires and things, so right now, there's no, what do you call it, restrictions on campfires across the state due to, that does happen, the issue, you know, don't have a fire because of the dryness, what do you call it, forest fire hazard level. Right now, there isn't one. If you do smell smoke or see a fire, it says, please do not call their non-emergency line and do not message them on Facebook. They don't monitor those 24 hours a day, five days, those are just, you know, kind of conveniences. If you really think there's an issue, dial 911 and tell them what the issue is, and they will send a note, and fire people will come and inspect the area and see what it is. So, call 911 if you really are concerned, because that way you will get responded to, you know, 24/7. So, that would be, I do not have, I think this is due to the schedule in the summer and having one meeting a month, I do not have the EMS report, but I will have it in September, the next meeting. So, let me move on to events and such. Events, we met on August 10th, there's actually quite a bit to be discussed there. We've added tonight, two concerts, there's one Saturday, J.J. Lynch Band, and there's another one, oh my goodness, I'm drawing a blank on the name, Something Allen. There's another band on the.
Dave Allen.
Dave Allen, thank you. Dave Allen on the 27th. Both of those were in the change to the calendar documents there, approved tonight. So, come on out. J.J. Lynch Band, I notice is very good, and I think I've heard the Dave Allen Band as well. Both of those events will have the associated relaxation of the Oprah container rolls in the little area where the concert is. Let's see. We also discussed the Hallow Weekend, we're looking ahead towards that and beginning that planning, hopefully have a lot of that solidified by the 1st of September, working with the historic committee, has ideas about it, I know that they've mentioned. The Grounds for Art people had ideas, I think, about some decoration stuff. The women's group, I think, is spearheading it, and so it should be a lot of fun. And hoping to move prior then, I'm going to make sure it's okay with everybody, the movie date for October, that Friday night, to align with the Hallow Weekend. House decorating contest, parade, Halloween, what do you call it, costume parade, a spooky walk, maybe, costume contest, pumpkin contest, various things going on. We also may possibly bring back the Pooch Parade, one of the weekends in October, I know Christina has expressed interest in possibly doing that. The paintout is also looking like it's going to be in October, that has been taken over or will be, will be run by this year, Grounds for Art, that group of people, I think one of them is sitting over here. And I'm sure they'll do a wonderful job, I know that the previous people who ran it, Stephanie and Alex, did a wonderful job, they just needed a break. Let's see here, the movie for September 9th is, as of now, I don't know what it is, so they're still trying to decide between two movies, they were planning on trying to put out a survey to ask for opinions, so I'm not sure if they're planning to do that, probably on the town website. Anyway, so, I think that was it for the events. Yeah, I think the Hallow Weekend's going to be very exciting, a lot of fun stuff. Onto recreation, we were unable to have a meeting in August due to people being here, there, and everywhere. I myself was in West Virginia on Monday and Tuesday, but we have been able to communicate some via email. We have a few different things that will be on the next agenda, end of August, and one is the September gravel grinder being proposed by the, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the group, but it's the gravel grinder, they've now done three of them, fall and spring, the spring was in May, and it would come through town, and they'd be looking to have an aid station at the Nassau Trailhead. Basically, a bunch of people ride a big loop around a few counties and pass through our town. We also, on the agenda, will be discussing comments and proposals for the management plan for the spring side open areas. We've already, that's been going on for a while, and trying to get it all hammered out just right. One of the things we added recently was the Monarch Way, a little trail that Leo Baldwin has spearheaded, and it's worth checking out if you have any interest in lepidoptera, such as Demias plexibus, the common monarch. But anyway, she'll also be meeting with Rutgers for assistance in doing these projects, the environmental department, I believe, and they may be helping us with 4H trainings September. We're also looking now to try to begin planning for Summer Rec 2023, to bring it back, and looking at the possibility of maybe coming up with a logo for the rec committee, we'll see about that. And then also, there are some places where there are trail maintenance stands, basically a big steel thing bolted to the ground with tools attached to it with chains or cables, so that people can fix bikes and things at the trailhead if they discover their wheel broke or something. And so, we're looking into the idea of having one of those at the Columbia Trailhead, since it sees a lot of traffic, and that might be a useful addition. Finally, there was an interest in the rec committee in reviewing the proposed improvements from a few years ago, prior to the whole world going crazy, for improvements to Union Forge Park, peripheral trail around the one area, the possibility of an overlook at the top of the old railroad bed, the possibility of a picnic area somewhere. Once again, just beginning to look at, look back at those plans and see if there's a way to begin having them happen and move forward again. I think, I've tried to go as quick as I could, I think that was everything that I had, oh, one, I hate to take an extra few moments, but I worked with Joe Ahern on the EDC, Economic Development Committee, and he was always a, you know, he had tremendous input, and I wish I'd known him better. He was an interesting guy and a neat guy, and he contributed a lot. He's had a hard time the last little bit on set seat to have heard over the weekend if he had passed away. Mike Seidro, I worked a little more with, he helped with many events in town, and I think there were people that felt him a little bit, maybe not, a little gruff, and maybe not so easy to become close to, but he was a good person. The food pantry is one thing, he's one of the main people responsible for the fact that we have the Commons park. He helped to identify that that was a thing we could get as a town many years ago, before I was here, and helped to get that, and so I was very sad to see, to hear that. And then Betty Ann Dean, I'm using the classroom next to hers, I taught with her as a second grade teacher for a number of years, 10, 15 years, and she finally retired, and we all, good luck, you know, lucky you, but she would continue to come back and volunteer with her dog to do work with the children and have them, it was a, what do you call it, a therapy dog. And so, I saw her, you know, repeatedly, every year, she was, she wanted to keep helping. So, it, once again, is a, three people in a row that I had a lot of contact with, and it was, it's, they certainly had a powerful impact on the people around them, and hopefully we can all say the same thing when we finally, you know, kick the bucket. Anyway, sorry to take that for time, but, thank you.
And I just think it's good to lead off with that too, Steve, that we have such wonderful people in Hybridge, and we don't really appreciate the depth of who they are until after, and then we start thinking back. But again, I knew all three of those people, Betty Ann's been my next door neighbor for like forever, and she just always gave, and I remember her always, the Pooch Parade, her dogs were always in it, and she made costumes for her, and she would always invite kids from your school to take her dogs around, and the dogs had costumes and everything, so, you know, it makes me smile when I think of those things. Environmental, thank you, a continued thank you to my environmental team who waters Main Street planters and the new trees that we have with this drought part of the summer. It's been extremely difficult to keep Main Street blooming, but we have done it, and it hasn't been easy. I also want to thank Girl Scout Troop 80594, because they also picked up some watering of the planters in the Commons to help us out a little bit on off days when we weren't doing it. And someone, whoever, decided to donate to us a wicker patio set for Inside the Gazebo at the Commons, it looks really cute.
I saw that.
It's really nice, but I have no idea where it came from, but it's like really, really nice. I know, so I think in the winter.
Was that a striker?
Is it?
I helped them move it there.
It looks great. I mean, it's really nice.
Well, tell them, thank you, we love it.
I will do that.
Ask them if you have covers for it for them.
You want everything.
Well, I could use covers for it, because it's in pretty good shape. Well, that mystery was solved, wonderful. Also, that tonight, on our agenda, we passed the Commons Walkway contract, so we should be having some work getting started soon to make that connection that we've been talking about again, a lot of things we talked about for years before it happens, but I think we're actually going to be able to go from Commons lot down into Main Street with a really nice area that we got a Sustainable Jersey grant for. I want to thank Colleen and Bonnie for a lot of work, for pushing that forward when things fell apart and we had to go out the bit again and everything to make this really happen.
Yeah.
And then, speaking of the house, that the truck ran into on Mill Street, the Brock family, I happen to know really, really well, and they mentioned to me, and I just wanted to say, what a wonderful town we live in, that the first responders, everybody who came, DPWs, the police squad, I mean, whatever, were professional, caring, right there, they felt so taken care of when that happened at 5:00 o'clock in the morning, whatever. And then the residents on that street just poured out, this is who Hybridge is. Somebody offered them a house, they were going away on vacation for two weeks, you can have my house, it's over on Silk Street. That's everything, people were coming up with, Sue, I know you're helping do things too, like, how nice that this is who Hybridge is, that when there's a big issue with some family, everybody just pours out, and they continue to pour out, and they don't just do it that night, they remember on, so I just wanted to pass that on, because that was great to hear.
If I may just add one, just one quick thing, because I've been talking with her, the house is going to be demolished, and so it's just a sad time, so if we can continue to support the family, even though they're still able to stay in the area, which is great, but it's going to be tough, so.
And I know they're looking for another house in Hybridge, they want to stay in Hybridge.
Okay, I'll keep it brief. I was able to assist the fire department with submitting a ARP grant for PPE. Still, again, as Councilman Sylvester said, trying to get a date set for the transit bridge meeting, we'll keep working on that. Still working on trees, going around with the water authority now on their property to see if there's other trees we can share the cost of removing, there's always another one to add to the list. Continuing to follow up on claims for insurance and FEMA applications we have in for IDA problems that we encountered. And again, I would like to also welcome Brandon Metz, our new DPW director, looking forward to working with him, and I'd like to give a shout out to our DPW department as a thank you for all they've been doing for us lately, always there, and can't thank you enough.
Absolutely.
I'm short and sweet tonight, too. Big event for me personally, the question came up earlier about 100 West Main, just for some background, Hybridge has been really trying to apply pressure there. We've been fining them daily since 2019 to either improve that property, sell it, tear it down, hand it over to us, something. So, we finally had a second court, or third court date this week, didn't quite go the way we planned in the way that we weren't able to present our case the way we wanted to, but it's still ongoing, and we have another court date set up September 22nd. So, if everyone could send some, I don't want to say positive vibes their way, but maybe positive vibes our way, because I think we can all agree that something needs to change there. I heard quite a bit of feedback about a tax mailer that went out with, or a tax chart that went out with the mailer, I hear you, and I can appreciate that it certainly didn't provide enough information, especially for those that had assessments on top of, you know, a chart that maybe didn't, that definitely didn't provide information that you were looking for. So, I hear that, we've been working on a chart that provides more information over a longer period of time, that not, and I want to be very clear, not to point the finger at anybody for anybody doing anything wrong, previous administrations, schools, county, not for that purpose, but to take a look where Hybridge has been over 15 years and try to look at how the. 15 years, and try to look at how the trends are going over the next 15 years, and decide as a community where we want to bid. So again, it's really meant to be informational and open the door to discussion. We all know our taxes are high, and I mean, that's, I mean, I don't want to diminish it here in Hybridge, but it is all over the state of New Jersey. It's just not a great state for property taxes. But that's going to be coming soon. We're going to just post it on the website, so be on the lookout for that. This past Monday, I was invited to a meeting of mayors from Hunteren County and the commissioners to meet with Senator Cory Booker to discuss tourism and all the great things to attract tourism that we have, and to showcase all the great tourism, things that we have right here in Hybridge, Solitude House, the Commons, the trails, our parks. Unfortunately for me, I had a work commitment that hit me right at the last minute, so I wasn't able to make that meeting, but Cory Booker was forced in to commit to the Hunteren Games this Saturday. So he will be attending. I will be there. I see some faces out here that will also be there. It's going to be so much fun. I'm really looking forward to it. It's an opportunity to meet mayors in the other communities, their people, have some fun, and we can all, you know, rush Senator Booker with our tourism ideas. That would be great. And that's all I got. Bill list, madam.
No, no.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to start putting your name here, so I remember.
There actually is one item that I want to report on. That's the only reason I haven't let you skip over.
Sorry, sorry.
At the last council meeting, I reported that there had been a lawsuit filed against the Hybridge Police Department, one of its officers. And for those who weren't here, it arose from a dispute between Ford Management, which was operating Mrs. Riley's pub for a while, and the group that owns Mrs. Riley's. And when Mrs. Riley's group decided to take back operation of the pub, they called in the police department to make sure there wasn't any problem, it would be peaceful. The group that was running Ford's management filed a lawsuit against the Mrs. Riley's group on various grounds, and included the Hybridge Police Department for being there essentially to keep the peace. I'll say this, we filed a motion with the court, asking the court to dismiss it, saying that the complaint done in space didn't state a claim against the police department, and even if it did, they violated certain procedural issues that are required under the Court Claims Act. In response to our motion, the attorney for Ford's Management called and said will voluntarily dismiss the case against the police department and the officer. They did so without prejudice, so there's a possibility they could file again if they got more information. I would hope that they don't, because I don't think they're today sending merit for the case. So in response to our motion, the case was dismissed. I wanted to check on that.
So as a town, we're now no longer involved in any way?
That's exactly right. That's acceptable. Hopeful requests and the like, but, you know, that's a difference.
That's fine.
We have one extra item. Hairbeats was added late today, so our quota comes to $2,210,215 for you.
That's on the back of the list. Motion to approve the bill list.
Go.
Second.
Go.
Grant.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Farren.
Yes.
Onto the second round of public comments. One minute per person.
Sally Wood from Solitude. I just want to say what I thought the golf redevelopment plan was going to be, isn't, but that makes me sad, but oh well, at least I'm going to take care of the golf carts and, you know, do what other people are. So, and I also made a mistake seeing the three people who voted against the last time. Sorry, Steve, Sylvester, you were not there. I thought that, by the way. Anyway, go for it. This weekend, that's fair.
Go for it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Go.
Grant.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Strange.
Yes.
And Farren.
Yes.
All right, next council meeting, September 8th, 7:30 regular fire album.